Let's call the meeting to order. I am Senator Roy Walton, Chair of Business and Department of Education. This is our meeting call for October 4th, 2023 at 9:30 a.m., 452 Columbus Boulevard. It is now 9:39, and I will call the meeting to order beginning with our pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is as follows by the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome. Happy fall, and now officially fall. Good to see you all. We have a good agenda of things that I'm excited to move through today, including the long wait approval of our new social studies model curriculum material. I know we got some public comment on that. So let's move into that. Public participation by Chair Benham will call names that she calls. Please come to the table in the front. The lines states your name for the record, and we will ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you do start to run longer than three minutes, I will give you a gentle nod and ask you to rack up your final thoughts.
First speaker is Carolyn Halman.
Commissioner Russell Tucker and team members of the board. My name is Carolyn Halman, and I am an education consultant at Ed-advancement, one of Connecticut's PREX. I am joining this morning to share my unwavering support of the 2023 social studies standards. I have 20 years' classroom experience in Connecticut public schools, teaching fifth and sixth grade English, Latin, Dark, and social studies. I am delighted to share that this newest iteration of the Connecticut social studies standard is the best yet. Thanks to the expert and inclusive leadership of Steve Armstrong and Tony Roy, this new and improved document is a result of a tremendous collaborative effort. It was an honor to serve as a member of the steering committee, the standards writing team, and the position statement writing team. As an Ed-advancement consultant working with educators across the state on a variety of initiatives, I am often reminded that none of our initiatives matter if our students are not showing up to school and engaging in the learning process. In our post-pandemic world with the emergence of artificial intelligence and other challenges, it is critical that we make school and learning feel genuinely relevant and worthwhile for our students. Thoughtfully designed instructions is one of the most powerful tools we have to reach our learners, and that thoughtfully designed instruction must be built on a sound basis. Standards are exceptional in every way. Of course, they do what we would expect from social study standards to do. They promote civic competence and embedded goals of college career and civic readiness. They prioritize democratic values and valuable connections. They promote a deep understanding of the history of our world and our nation. They are grounded, engaged, informed, and thoughtful citizens. But I believe these new standards exceed these expectations. They are inclusive and inspired by the combined thinking of everyone from classroom teachers, administrative leaders, university professors, and leading national experts in the social studies. There has perhaps never been a time when social studies education was more critical than in this moment, and these standards provide the foundation for public school education to meet that challenge. These standards not only satisfy the traditional expectations already noted, but they also offer opportunities for students to engage deeply with meaningful culturally responsive social study content. They recognize multiple perspectives and are inclusive of the worldview of people who have been underrepresented and marginalized. They support the critical inquiry necessary to understand and dismantle systems of racism, discrimination, bias, and oppression. And above all, these standards reflect the diversity of the human experience and set the stage for instructional design that will foster classroom communities where all students feel seen, heard, and valued. What could be more engaging than that? I respectfully recommend that these standards be approved without reservation. Thank you.
Anthony Roy.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Connecticut State Department of Education, I am Anthony Roy, and I stand before you, or should be before you today, as a proud representative of the Connecticut Council for Social Studies, a devoted classroom teacher in Bluefield Public Schools, and director of the Connecticut Social Studies Standards Project. I want to express my strong support for the new social studies standards and take a moment to highlight the critical importance of social studies in our student education. Twenty-three months ago, Connecticut educators across the state embarked on a journey to develop standards that promoted justice, representation, inclusivity, global context, agency, and local connections. A result of the set of standards seen by national reviewers is the best in the country. Our vision for, excuse me, our vision at the Connecticut Council for Social Studies is a world in which all students are educated and inspired for lifelong inquiry and formal civic action. These new standards are a significant step towards realizing this vision. They emphasize the integration of content and inquiry, providing our students with the tools they need not only to understand our complex world, but also actively engage in it. In an ever-changing landscape of information and perspectives, these standards empower our students to navigate the vast sea of knowledge with discernment and incredible empathy by fostering a deep sense of history, possible, and active citizen. As an educator, I've witnessed firsthand the transformative power of social studies education. It goes beyond text books and classrooms. It instills in our students a sense of empathy, curiosity, and possibility. It encourages them to question, to seek answers, and become advocates for positive change. For these standards to truly take a difference, we need not only your support for the standards from this room, but also from our entire community. I urge everyone here today and those listening to this message to recognize the vital role of social studies education in shaping our future. Let us all commit to fostering a generation of informed citizens who can think freely, engage in meaningful dialogue, and actively participate in a democratic process. In closing, I call upon each of you to join us in promoting social studies education as a cornerstone of our educational system. Together, we ensure that every student in Connecticut has access to high-quality standards and a curriculum based on those standards that prepare them for a lifetime of inquiry and informed civic action. Thank you for your time and your dedication to our students and our students.
Good morning. My name is Gabe Dunne, and I'm a teaching and learning specialist at Crawford Educational Services, one of the state's three sixth PREX. As a previous technical social studies teacher for 12 years, I left my classroom to work full-time in the professional development world in January 2022. I wish to know for transparency that the enactment of the standards will drive a law expulsion of my position. I want to express my gratitude that I was invited to work on the standard development process by Steve Armstrong and Anthony Roy. I am completely honored that I have the privilege to work with the PSPE and CPFS leadership and project associate, professor, consultant, and teacher across the state. The standard development process has made me a better person. At this moment, though, I wish I was back in the classroom. I wish for this level of structure, clarity, and usability of standards to guide my instructional decisions. These standards are our key design to ensure K-12 vertical alignment across the four social studies disciplines and through inquiry. They are rich in stories for students to uncover. They are rigorous in their expectation for students' disciplinary literacy skills. They confirm and affirm the great achievement that is already occurring. They are particularly that social studies education and inquiry driven process. They challenge us to the same and ask more. The Connecticut Elementary Secondary Social Studies standards will make us better. I can speak out of argument about why social studies is important. My colleagues and loved ones put a test for that. As convincingly as possible, teaching and learning social studies is beautiful. Social studies has the power to humanize and personalize our learning unlike any other content. If the intent of our education system is to create and inform populace in our sort of existing society, social studies has to be the harder instruction at all grade levels for all students to be seen, heard, and valued. Social studies instruction is needed for our confidence.
Good morning. My name is Mary Hannah. I am a proud resident of Norwalk, Connecticut, and I serve as the district K-8 social studies coordinator in U.K., Connecticut. Obviously, it's Connecticut, right? Obviously, it's Connecticut, right? I have been privileged to serve as project associate on the standards project. Our collaborative work led us to create guiding principles and then standards that would be appropriate for all our children across the state. These standards and all the possibilities that they afford provide a pathway for equitable social studies instruction that nurtures informed, critical thinkers who can navigate our complex world with confidence. Working within areas, particular interests in mind focus on recovering learners where it all begins. Through this work, I understand that standards alone may not be able to fix the marginalization of social studies in some of our schools. They are, however, a good step in the direction of coherence, alignment, and equity. A 2017 position statement from our National Council for Social Studies says it well. Denying the spilling and background knowledge by engaging in social studies activities can lead to lower literacy levels and ironically increase the achievement gap. They go on to say, if the young learners of this nation are to become effective participants in a democratic society, then social studies must be an essential part of the curriculum throughout the elementary years. In a world that demands independent and cooperative problem-solving to, I'm sorry, to address complex social, economic, environmental, and personal concerns, core social studies content is a basic part of success in reading, writing, and intruding. These standards serve as the roadmap for this opportunity. They hold the promise that essential knowledge and skills will be taught regardless of a child's background or where they go to school. Put into practice, they will allow students to investigate their communities, their country, and their world. They will encourage development of perspective-taking, cultural competence, empathy, and a commitment to making the places where we were that work as well as the broader world a better place. Finally, they will instill a sense of agency in our young learners. Students learn their voices matter and that they have the capacity to affect change in their communities and beyond. There is an excitement and deep need for these standards and the work that can now begin in districts across the state to align them. I thank you for prioritizing this work and hopefully improving these standards. Indeed, in our collective work as we nurture informed and active citizens from an early age, we lay the foundation for a greater and more inclusive future. Thank you.
Lauren Brinkett.
Good morning. Lauren Brinkett. I'm the social studies coordinator in Westport Public Schools. I'm also a Woodbridge resident, and I'm a project associate on the Connecticut State Standards Project. The Connecticut Social Studies Framework, which was published in 2015, has served as a very strong foundation for nearly a decade. These programs today are an important and powerful next step for our children and our future. The Connecticut Social Studies Elementary Inspectorate Standards represent not just months of collaborative work within the social studies community, but years of work to shift and revitalize social studies in order to promote student standards and inquiry-based approaches in classrooms throughout our state. This document presents developmentally appropriate and cognitively demanding standards that are inclusive of critical knowledge and skills. Most of all, this document aims to protect and preserve the very foundations of public education and informed citizenry. This is a critical moment in our democracy. As a social studies educator, a curriculum coordinator, and a parent of three children currently enrolled in public schools, I am filled with gratitude for the efforts of the Connecticut Council for the Social Studies Department of Education and countless others to support the creation and iteration and revision of this document. At the time when our state leadership had articulated a commitment to reenergizing the economy, restoring infrastructure, and investing in clean energy, it seems fitting that it is also a time to advance social studies and civic learning as a prominent and valuable component of compulsory education for each student in our state. Thank you for your thoughtful inspiration of these standards today and your commitment to not just the students, but the citizens of Connecticut.
First gentleman, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Dino, and I'm a project associate. I am here to speak in support of the Connecticut Elementary Secondary Social Studies Standards. Today, our actions as educators will impact how and what students across Connecticut learn about themselves, their neighborhoods, their state, their nation, and the world. Knowledge is power. Our students deserve opportunities to learn all they can to become an informed citizen capable of having a positive role in their world. We live in a small state, but Connecticut students are not guaranteed the same educational experiences, especially in social studies. Not every district has a district-level social studies administrator who can guide teachers in prioritizing social studies topics and skills. This leads to differences in social studies experiences, not just between districts, but between schools and towns, and even classrooms in a school. Without guidelines and well-schooled content to teach, many teachers shy away from critical topics because they lack personal knowledge or they worry the community might find them controversial. The K-12 social studies standards will provide more consistency and equity in social studies instruction across Connecticut school districts. Sixteen were discerned from the guiding principles that were published last year: justice, representation, inclusivity, global context, agency, and local connection. And these were referenced throughout the writing process. The standards do not reflect content topics. Inquiry standards establish types of critical thinking activities in which students should engage as they interact with the content. I have a senior partner in other public schools. She loves school, and she loves her friends, and she loves asking questions. She wants to know everything about everything. Last month while I was in Boston, she saw a person fleeing the subway tunnel. She asked, "What are they doing? Why are they there?" I answered, and after a few moments of silence, she said, "The next time I come to Boston, I'm bringing a lot of dollars to get to people." I'm sharing this because I think this is the first solution. But also, this is inquiry instead of engagement. She deserved, she asked questions, she respected, and she came up with a plan. As educators, our job is to help students find and assert. If we don't show topics in the classroom, our students will find answers on their own, and they may not be from reliable sources. All Connecticut students deserve opportunities to learn about history, geography, economics, and civic, K-12, in a manner that is engaging, supports them as inclusive learners, and connects to people, places, and events that are meaningful to them. I ask you to approve the Connecticut Elementary and Social Studies Standards for my daughter and for all students. Thank you.
Jason Naxine.
Good morning, Commissioner Russell Tucker, members of the board. My name is Dr. Jason Naxine. I'm the executive director of Connecticut Humanities Council, visiting professor at Brown University in the Center for Studies of Labor and Justice, and vice chair of Connecticut Semi-Quintennial Commission. I'm also a resident of North Stone. I want to thank you for this opportunity to offer my thoughts on the adoption of the social studies standards. Connecticut Humanities is a funder of this effort. We're proud to partner with the State Department of Education and the Connecticut Council for the Social Studies, Steve and Tony in particular. They've been wonderful partners. This emerged through our work with the Connecticut Cultural Fund, where we set forth a couple of priorities that directly are reflected by the standards, including the creation of digital resources and connecting our cultural organizations to K-12 educators and students. So, with my different hats, I want to commend CCFS and the State Department of Education for coming together to produce a rich and comprehensive social studies standards document. Connecticut Humanities is proud to support this work. We also want to commend the team who assembled the standards. This was a monumental task, and they included diverse voices. And I want to share a personal anecdote because I've spent a number of years in college classrooms with UConn, Con College, Brown University, teaching courses on ethnic history that involved education focused on Black and Brown in the indigenous communities. And there was, at the end of semester, frequent concern for students this is the first time they were ever learning these histories and about these communities. And I think that this effort is a long way to resolving that. I also want to note, too, within my capacity as vice chair of Connecticut Semi-Quintennial Commission of the 250th coming in 2026, there's a time limit to these standards as well. The four themes of the 250th commission include doing history power in place, telling inclusive stories before the common good. And I'm thrilled that this will be synergistic with this effort. So we are eager to work with all of you, the educators, to ensure that our teachers are supported and our students flourish. I support these, enthusiastically support these social studies standards as presented. Thank you.
Anna Elder.
Good morning. My name is Anna Gold, and I'm a senior at Staples High School in Westport, Connecticut. I understand the importance of diversity and representation in social studies education at the K-12 level, and how these new standards uphold these values. I have attended Connecticut's students' education classes in public schools my whole life, and I'm actively engaged in social studies. The social studies are from kindergarten through kindergarten and contemporary world studies at the high school level. As a young student, it often felt to me as though it should only have one perspective, and it was not mine. The ones we use to teach cannot be Eurocentric and should not simply be related by our stories to respective months of the year. There's a variety of viewpoints. Represent minority voices, build historical and critical thinking skills, and teach media literacy. Diversity itself is a priority. It creates a more accurate picture of history in the world that we currently live in. Teaching from a broader perspective in terms of nationality, race, gender, ideology, and more opens up students' minds beyond the single dominant narrative. Students that only gave them much room to grow at their school's premise. And these new standards expand the perspective that would be present in classrooms. Especially in the digital age where information is as readily available as ever, the skills to navigate information and critically inform well-informed students are critical. The classroom is the ideal place to cultivate these skills. An emphasis on intersectionality, multiculturalism, media literacy, and civic engagement is clear in these standards. This is an important step in improving youth to be citizens in a bright democracy. Thank you for allowing me to comment today. Your consideration of these standards is very much appreciated by me and my colleagues here.
Allison Dorn.
Good morning. I'm Connecticut Division Board for having all of us here today. And your thoughtful consideration of the standards document. My name is Allison Dorn. I'm a social studies teacher at Churchill War High School, Churchill, Connecticut. I'm also the president of the Association of Society of Connecticut History, and I'm a project associate on the standards writing project. I cannot emphasize enough how students, teachers, and curriculum professionals in districts are struggling right now. The world is changing. Some of that has to do with COVID. Some of it has to do with technology. Some of it just has to do with changing norms and worries in the United States. These standards are ahead of all. And what is a social study if not the study of people? Of humans, humanities, how we interact with one another, how we understand one another, how we help one another. I am a parent of a four-year-old girl, middle-aged wife, and these standards incorporate my family in a way that I wish I had as a student in Connecticut schools. Twenty-five years now. Forty-one. These are revolutionary in a way that is not offensive. People say that revolution or change have to create waves and make people mad, but in fact, if you were right, it's inclusive. And these standards are inclusive, thoughtful, and historically sound. And I can't thank you enough for your version of all of how they're held and where I was talking about. So, thank you.
Senator Lidia.
Good morning. My name is Senator Lidia, and I live in Connecticut. I'm an eighth-day teacher in Richmond. And since I graduated from college twenty-five years ago, I've been a teacher, a school administrator. In the last ten years in Connecticut, I've been working to support educators. The past year, I've spent working with the Connecticut Council for the Social Studies as the professional learning coordinator. Today, I see in support of these drastic K-12 social studies content standards as an educator and also as a parent of two elementary-age children. Many people have worked tirelessly and name-takingly to ensure that these standards reflect the various needs of legislation that has been passed in recent years to raise the studies of historically excluded communities, including Indigenous studies, Latin American studies, Latin American studies, and those of my own communities that Asian Americans who have calendar such studies and also throughout the standards document. These are fundamental to all children's learning in our communities, in our state, and our nation. As a child of color growing up in Los Angeles, I did not have access to the social studies at children's around me. My classmates are colored, and my white classmates would convert this. And many years later, I continue to unlearn and relearn to better understand myself and others in the world around me. My children are children of color, and when I got started with the standard, a lot of people appreciate examples of people of color and how to teach to activity plus focus in the standards. Learning these names and words is not enough, and that is not the extent of the possibility that I see in these standards. I see my children gaining warmth in this document as an integral diversity. I see the possibility of them learning how to manage ethnic communities that make us men, Indians, Connecticut, the United States, and then low or in your flying narrative of justice-based movements that have always been a part of building and evolving our world. And this document is an important part supporting our teachers and tools and strategies for the vision of education. It has content guidance, and it also has room for teachers to contextualize their local community's histories and to be responsible for the identity and cultures of the children and the families within which they work directly in the presence. Our teachers teach this guidance as they learn and grow to thrive by our children and in the partnership with the parents and caregivers. Our children deserve mirrors of themselves in their communities and windows to other communities and worlds that are not their own. And this content standard document, in tandem with our state inquiry of historians, geographers, economists, and local scientists to ask questions, do research, and take informed actions to create a more just world for all of us. Just to end this session, I am going to work with my ten-year-old child, my brother-in-law, who asked me to share that she also supports these standards. When we talked about sharing and what I would say, she advised me to tell them that this document supports teaching the truth so young people can learn from the past, understand the present, and make a better future together. Thank you so much.
Tom Burrow.
Good morning. I'm chief of Manchester Free and Visitor over the last twelve years. And probably, I think, to bring you into perspective of former student of the K-12 Social Studies Standards, folks lacking in college. Right? People all six years, they went to college, community graduate, or community student. They started out at Manchester Community College. It's now the sixteenth anniversary, and Manchester is still celebrating the last one for our bicentennial year. But things have happened throughout the year in our own school system. I'll start off with this real quick. Colored State coming up next Monday. There's connection to Spain with the East Colomores or Almirones. Left in southern Faradran, in most regions, Smithsonian Magazine thought about what they left behind in architecture and culture. And I think they were expelled after a while, and some were put in slavery, wrong with shoes because of the frost, and were non-calcum. That's another thing, too, with religious pluralism. It's part of our country. It's no opportunity, no dominant revision. no dominating division. Over anyone racist, and it's black men, and we call the N-word seven times in my life, or, you know, pick up on non-meral cues, and, you know, any person, you know, what I am, it's, you know, the same, or you guys, I mean, say what you have to say, whether people agree or not, and, you know, what I am, it's a black man, and they may tax us and not hire us, please. Neil, this is a magazine, right now, I'm at the Webber, and I have a raid administration invasion, I don't know what to say, it's twenty, I don't know what to say, that time, I guess it's a lot of, well, upheaval, I remember that, it was October, forty years old, nineteen eighty-three. I think that magazine is back out, dealing with what's going on with our, the population here in the state of Connecticut over the last fifty or more years, and different countries around, Latin America, Mexico, and I think they didn't include any, too, always in the next year there. I wanted to mention Band School Week, and they had Library Awards in August twenty-first edition of Nation Magazine, and I think there's been pushback on Florida and on the state, and that, we see well, Connecticut, but I think this is where Governor Sanders and these other presidents, governors, our history, Black History every day, and it goes, everybody knows the history, women's history, OBGYN, GI, we said, we're not going away. And this morning, they're talking about doing a work around the state of Florida, and this morning, USA Today, the front page covered around stories, so, thanks to, that's good. And to go on to higher education, I think this should reflect entirety of the community, and they want qualified people there, but I know with pushback, experience, action is one thing, we can look at residency factors and look at the whole issue, and this, watching the magazine, talking about college ranking, and how military deserve, they perform in action, and other articles about college voice reflect the diversity of their students, so.
Wrap it up.
So, to wrap it up, we need to celebrate one, two, three, and I guess remembering Satsang, Donald Kennedy, which is next month, November twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three, I was a kid, and I lived in civil rights, and like I said, the race improves out there in eight months, uh, deal with it, our country changes, looks better in the twenty-first century, not in nineteen ninety-three, no one should be living in the second classes, and for example, if you don't like it, see that, free country, and sign your first amendment right. Thank you.
Anna Valder.
My name is Amanda Ovee, and I'm an administrative professor of social studies education at the University of Connecticut. I'm also a chair of the Professional Learning Committee on the Boards of Connecticut Council for Social Studies, and I've worked with Anthony Roy and Steve Armstrong as a project associate on the guiding principles and also writing of the new social studies standards. As a leading leader, preparing social studies teachers is imperative. I train teachers on the inquiry framework to develop civic mindedness among our students for the democratic society. And the College Career and Civic Life Framework, which is a K-3 framework that guides the social studies teaching, okay, it has inquiry at its heart, and so it is divided into four dimensions. Dimension one starts by asking inquiry questions. Dimension two is looking at this scenario, for instance, history, you know, civics, the content areas in social studies. Dimension three, evaluating resources for their authenticity and for evidence, and then giving inclusion or taking a contact. So, the inquiry, and the inquiry, but the fourth report came out and said, okay, those standards are lacking in civic content, okay? So if we're, our intention is to develop civic mindedness among our students, we need to provide educators. And that's exactly what was the purpose of the standards. Not only just to advise the civic context, but also to include history of people, like focus on diversity, focus on inclusion. So the twenty-twenty-three Connecticut Social Studies Standards provides info for the community where students should practice active citizenship inside and outside the classroom. The standards encourage students to discuss civic issues in school by analyzing primary and secondary resources and examining evidence, and they also facilitate practicing citizenship outside of the school to communicate, to communicate conclusions of an inquiry, through instance, writing response, posters, or any other creative means. When people think of taking action, they think of protests, that this is not a date, and that's why social studies needed to help people understand that there are many forms of taking action, you know, that does not have to include legal protests, you can just take action, like creating awareness, like creating posters, like writing a letter, you know, this infection, as long as you communicate with the message.
Do you think there's something left on?
Sure. I want to say that each course from the K-12 and the new standards includes opportunities for students to practice and discuss civic issues, and I am hoping that you support the new twenty-twenty-three social studies standards. Thank you, Anna.
You too. You all for that public testimony? And you're way in the item, primarily in the item that is proposed today, appreciate that. We will move to item four A, considerations of the minutes from the September sixth, twenty-twenty-three State Organization Meeting. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? This has been moved and properly seconded. I just want a note, a correction under executive session. There was no, there were no motions, no actions taken during executive session, so the vote to come out of executive session happens back in full session. It's still, 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 still ongoing in executive session. With that correction? Any others? Seeing none, all in the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have item four B, considerations of the September sixth, twenty-twenty-three minutes of the Section ten dash four B in partial hearing panel meeting. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved improperly seconded. Are there any editor corrections required to both minutes? Any questions? Seeing none, all in the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are adopted as well. Thank you. So, Anna, good morning. Good morning. It's good to be with you today. A lot has happened since our last, our last meeting, including we have the opportunity to welcome our new deputy commissioner joining us, which is wonderful to see your full complement now at the, at the table. So, welcome, good to see you. And I understand a little bird told me that it's also a transition moment for Miss Kathy Stacey, who has supported the work of this board and certainly of the department for, in such wonderful and exemplary ways in our finance leadership. We are sad to see you transition over to the Office of Policy Administration, but feel like it's good to have a friend at OPM, so. I, 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 if you're gonna go somewhere, I'm glad that you'll, you'll still be close by. We will certainly miss you, right at the staple. I certainly want to thank you for your service at Staples then. Lots of work happening on many fronts, including the council that's working on education, educator certification, that is progressing and, but being facilitated well, and I think we will eventually have something to make on the board to see, and I'm not, not previewing anything at this point, it's very early in the process, but there is a broad constituency that's been brought together to take a look at that and to make some recommendations on how to modernize our educator certification process in the state, so we're excited about that work. I was looking forward to hearing positive reports out of the NASB National Conference coming up at the end of this week, at the end of this month, when our vice chair, Ben White, will come back elected to the board at that point, so we are excited, excited for that upcoming. And I want to thank Vice Chair Ben for representing us also at the K meeting earlier this month, last month. October. So, thank you, thank you for that. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, I think.
Oh, you did, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate that. As was mentioned, it is National Band Book Week, and I mention that because I feel like it's very fitting that during the Band Book Week, we would be taking off the new social studies standard, as it certainly speaks to Connecticut and the state and how we're leading and through the reference to the public comments about us being the national model on the new social studies standards that are part of today. I'm excited to have that presentation by staff, but I feel like we've had the presentation with the wonderful public testimony that we had today. So, in the spirit of a very inclusive curriculum that will prepare our young learners, and in the spirit of National Band Book Week, I encourage you to go out and read one of the books on the Band Book List. With that, move to report our commissioner.
Hi, Chair. I'm Chair Laurie Wood. Could we move up the adoption of the social studies standards, so that all the people who spoke.
We're waiting for the speaker to leave.
Then they can go on.
The chair accepts that point of order and reorients herself to item seven B, and I appreciate that suggestion. So, item seven B is the, the chair wants that motion to adopt, on the adoption of the Connecticut Elementary and Secondary Social Studies Standards. Item seven B, is there a motion?
I'm moving to adopt the standards.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, with multiple seconds. Please, I agree, we threw you off, I agree, you're right, you're the only one, okay. Please come to the table.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell Tucker, Board Chair DePoyus Lawson, Vice Chair Benham, board members, and our student members. And with me this morning is our colleague, that we've heard so much about already, Stephen Armstrong, our Social Studies Education Control Section for the Department of Education. So before you is the final draft of the Connecticut Elementary and Secondary Social Studies Standards. This document is the culmination of two years intentional work with our key partners, our interest groups and colleagues within the Connecticut State Department of Education and across the state. The draft standards were presented to Academic Standards as Subcommittee of the Board on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, with an update on process, format, and content, and it was then recommended that the standards come before you, State Board of Education, for consideration and adoption. Thank you, Committee Chair Cummins. As stated in the executive summary, the passage of Public Act twenty-one dash two, now codified as Connecticut General Statute, Section ten dash sixteen B B, requires the development of K-8 model social studies curriculum. Specific to social studies, Section three seventy-four, Part C State, that the model curriculum must provide and integrate the subject matter prescribed in Section ten dash sixteen B of the General Statute for Native American Studies, Asian American and Pacific Islanders Studies, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and other sexual orientations and gender identified studies, military service and experience of American veterans, dual citizenship, and media literacy, principles of social emotional learning, and racism. Upon analysis of the existing State Board of Education-approved social studies framework of twenty fifteen, it was determined that the design and development of a model curriculum that was inclusive of all groups recognized in this legislation needed to be renewed and improved set of standards, and it was necessary. The development of these standards includes numerous partners that we've heard of across Connecticut, parents, educators, state and national reviewers, partner in this work, whose leadership, knowledge, and care were invaluable in this process. I would also like to recognize the lead writers for the standards in the audience today, Caroline Kelso, Casey Gunn, Rhonda Elby, Lauren Franceson, Mary Tanna, Jennifer Tipolidia, Annabelle Luw, Jason Mancini, Alison Norrie, Jennifer Vindu, and Maria Warda. At this time, I would like to ask Stephen Armstrong to share just a brief statement on the potential that these standards have.
Sure, thank you very much. This will be a five-hour presentation. And then the three, if, if, so, I apologize for that. But just, if, if, if I was to say three things about these standards that we're presenting to you, it would be, first off, as I read you stated, there was a conscious effort, very conscious effort by the writers to have our standards present a way to talk about and study the various groups that live in Connecticut, that oftentimes feel that their story is not included in social studies. And I, I would just say that the groups, and I apologize, every, the groups that were called, that we called out in the standards, that are deserving, that should be cited, blacks, Latinos, Native Americans, Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, the C community, LGBTQ plus, veterans, these are groups that exist, these, these fine folks live in Connecticut, but we oftentimes hear students say, where's our story? Where's our story? And in these standards and the ensuing model curriculum, we're making a real strong effort to include those stories. So, not just those kids, but all kids in Connecticut learn about them. A second thing is this, these standards are based on the inquiry approach to education. Inquiry very simplistically means that students research problems, students are given answers. The answers are always right. They're the ones that come up with the answers, and we're asking students to explain their answers and to present them in various ways. We want students to be actively engaged in their education, and that the standards do that. And the third thing that I, I think standards really make an attempt to do is to provide a meaningful, a forward-looking vision for social studies in the K-5 of around, that not being critical of anyone, but national studies show that for various reasons, social studies in K-5 has been reduced or eliminated in some states. In Connecticut, there are districts that have robust, like, you know, K-5 social studies, others not so much. But what we want these standards to do is to provide a model for appropriate and robust K-5 social studies education.
In the project, we believe that these standards assist curriculum developers, our colleagues, and teachers to create transformative learning spaces that truly will meet learners where they are and prepare them for learning, life, and work beyond school. Finally, I do want to thank Commissioner Russell Tucker, she's been a critical thought partner and leader in this work. Her tough questions, and they are tough questions, her insight, her perspective helps to make this document very clear and fully relevant for all learners, adults, and students. So we are truly honored here today to present the Connecticut Elementary and Primary Social Studies Standards for your consideration for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for all the public testimony related to this. I know that this was in committee, did you want to say a thing? Mr. Hunter.
It was an absolute joy to sit. Um, it was an absolute joy to sit in this meeting, and it's, as Irene said, with, with Stephen Armstrong's inexhaustible energy, um, and passion for this work, and what I saw in this document was the affirming of identity for all who have been listed as groups here. So, um, the best I can say is, well done, Irene, and team, and Stephen, and this young lady in the back, I can't remember her name, who's in the meeting as well. Not, not the one I was, yeah, Nicole, yeah, Nicole, so, just absolutely great work.
Thank you. Thank you. What members have a question?
Uh, I just want to say, I, I think these standards are tremendous, and I think everybody who's now, absolutely commended. And, uh, but I read in the material that these are, uh, it's not a curriculum, it's standards, and, uh, apparently, with local education agencies, nobody has to adopt this. Is there any, any, any other, any other way to, you know, encourage that social districts to adopt these standards?
So Irene, you can speak to the standards, the model curriculum, and then the role of KAB as district, right?
Absolutely, and I invited Anthony Roy, who was part of the, to the table, too, as well. So you are correct, these are standards, and, um, they are the floor for the work that we're about to embark on, so they will guide us in the work to create a KAB model curriculum for social studies for the entire state to use. They are also the guidance that curriculum designers, curriculum directors, teacher leaders, to use to develop local curricula as well. So part of the next step that we've listed is to provide additional guidance for them on how do they do that? What does that work look like? In addition, we've noted in the next step, is the professional learning to fully understand the standards to get at the creation of a local curriculum, and then considering the work that we are doing as an agency to create model curricula. But perhaps there's something, as a teacher, perhaps you want to add to the standards development at the local level?
Yeah, I mean, I think what's really great about these standards is they're going to allow teachers to kind of dive into the content and make those connections between what their students need to know, right? So like, being, looking at who are the folks that are in the classroom, and how is it that we can make it relevant for them, right? How is it that we can take this relevancy and then make it into transferable knowledge? And I think that's something that these standards do, and of course, over time, we're going to provide professional learning opportunities to help that along. For instance, we have several webinars that are happening, we have a conference attending next week, um, and we're going to be helping teachers adopt these standards over time. We understand that it's not going to be overnight, we understand that there's going to be a lot of new learning for teachers, um, but I think, um, we're going to be able to come across with something that's going to be helpful and that's going to be beneficial to students.
So I think the board might be interested in getting continual updates on the rollout and the implementation at this level, similar to the way in which we track the rollout of the, uh, other, most of the graduate American, uh, who are still studying, we're very often tracking that as well, so that would be helpful. Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yep. Is there an informal curriculum center in this country, or sort of a super center, which is the College Boards? How is all this going to fit in with what they are going to be asking our students to do when they take the relevance things they are?
Um, by the way, talk, well, to answer your question, talking about, you know, using inquiry, quite honestly, is having students investigate, um, history. That's a key skill that would be needed, for example, on the AP college test, you know, the college AP test, uh, in U.S. history, for example, asks you to interpret maps, interpret documents and things. That's in this document, that's clearly in this document, and, and this is, um, in the College Board as well. And I would say, you know, inquiry, having kids investigate stuff, to do that, though, you have to have content knowledge as well, right? You can't just investigate something you don't know anything about. So I think to, to address your point directly, by saying we're for inquiry, we're also for content knowledge. And that's, I think, to answer your question, that's what's also necessary for success on the AP test.
Commissioner?
Just, Irene, I'm over here. However, I just really wanted to thank Irene, and Roy, and just the team, Stephen, as we're working hard, as indicated by Mr. Clenden, and the reinforcement that in Connecticut, the issue of stakeholder engagement and input and voice is really so important with everything that we do, not because it's easy, but because it's the right thing to do, uh, that all the voices are heard. And so I just want to thank you for continuing to uphold the fact that that's what we do here, is value stakeholder input in everything that we do, include our families, including constituents in our state, and having students' voice represented there. I so appreciate our student that spoke to us earlier as we were in public comments. So I just want to thank you for making that a reality.
Thank you. Um, I would tell you, as I reviewed this for the, for the meeting today, um, we got me into inquiry mode, and there were plenty of things that I wanted to go, um, and, and take a further look at that were education. So thank you for that. Um, seeing no other questions, are we ready to vote on this? All those in favor of the adoption of the Connecticut Elementary and Secondary Social Studies Standards, please do so by the way of mine?
Aye.
And opposed? All right, with the highest congregation, thank you to the team who worked on this, to all of these. And just, um, because I do know that there are visitors here, is anyone wishing to move anything from consent agenda? Item nine, A, B, or C? Anyone wishing to move anything from consent agenda? Seeing none, the Chair wants the motion on consent agenda, items A, B, and C. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, will be properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the items of consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? That those items carry, um, just in case our visitors for those items didn't want to stay, I wanted to put that along as well. Thank you. All right, I will go back in order now to our Commissioner, and it is your board.
Perfect. Uh, thank you very much to Board Chair Benham, Chair and all of our members. I remain pleased and I am pleased to highlight key information and activities undertaken since September's Board Meeting. As earlier indicated by Chair, our Deputy Deputy Commissioner for Academics and Innovation, Dr. Hughes is at the table with us, and for that large big smile on my face is the impact to have the, this amount of capacity. And while we're heading for a round, uh, you also heard that we're now also under the major transition. Also for our CFO Kathy Dempsey, as you've heard, after eighteen years, uh, at the agency, will be moving on to the Office of Policy and Management towards the end of the month. And so this is Kathy's, I'd say, last meeting in her role as CFO here. Uh, Kathy's experienced, uh, at OPM prior, so she was there before she came to the Department of Education. Uh, her knowledge of school finance and how the budget process works made her a critical member for our leadership team, a trusted resource for our superintendents, school business officials, municipal leaders, and policymakers. Uh, Kathy will be serving the role of Assistant Executive Budget Officer at OPM. And while, as you've heard, we will certainly miss her tremendously, certainly share our best wishes for her success in her new role, and as you said, we don't want to call it OPM. But just wanted to indicate that, uh, as you have my full report. Also wanted to point out to you that the Department's Affirmative Action Plan was approved at our last, uh, at last CHR meeting, this is something that we do annually. Our plan established hiring goals, promotional goals, and program goals that promote affirmative action. Uh, it also examined and eliminated any policy or employment practices that adversely impacts members of protected practices, and so we're always pleased when we go through the process and have our plan approved. So we want to thank the DEO staff and appreciate all their work, uh, with us going through that process. You've heard earlier about the KAB, um, and our Board, Joint Board Meeting that was attended, uh, by Deputy Commissioner Tony Mayrano was there with me, Mr. Taylor, and of course, Mr. Harris was there. Uh, we had an informative exchange, including invited feedback of Board members on the State Board of Education Plan, uh, that is hosted for public comments. Under other external operations, uh, I attended with members of the team here the Interagency Council for Ending the Achievement Gap Meeting that is chaired by the Lieutenant Governor, had an opportunity at that meeting to highlight our EdSite data portal and all the new data dashboards that are now available, thanks to our awesome team in the Performance Office. Uh, and we also did a press release, uh, on that, and hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it. We've generated a lot of interest, and I think some legislators are now looking to do a forum on our EdSite data portal, so we can do some education across the board on that, so we're looking forward to that occurring. The other thing I wanted to bring your attention to in terms of presentation, uh, that I was able to provide some welcome remarks and establish the purpose of our first Department's DEI Symposium, recognizing that there are so many boards that are onboarding DEI leaders and sources, uh, with members of the team here and the board, to help us to put together, uh, a symposium, which for the first time was bringing together, very unique, bringing together superintendents with their DEI leaders into one space. You were really, we were in this room, and we really had standing room only, it was full. And the purpose was to discuss the impact and critical role of the relationship between the district superintendent and the diversity, equity, and inclusion leaders, to provide strategies for superintendents and, and other stakeholders that actively support, empower, and collaborate with DEI leaders, and to share successful efforts, uh, that's happening in our, in our state. As I said, we're at a fun house, I'm really pleased that we had George Coleman, uh, former Commissioner of Education here, who was our keynote speaker, uh, for the event. As I shared with the group in the room, equity is not an initiative, it's not a one-and-done, and so if that's the approach, you're probably missing the mark, because initiatives come and initiatives go. It must be embedded in, in the work that is being done in order for it to be sustained, and that mindset that needs to permeate everything that we do. Mr. Coleman, uh, for those of you, uh, that may not know, uh, certainly a former Assistant Commissioner of Education here, two cents that he served in that, in that position during his twenty-four-year career here as Deputy Commissioner, Associate Commissioner, Bureau Chief in two different areas. Uh, but the entire time, uh, during the twenty-four years that I've worked, and I've worked with him, actually infused the values of equity and opportunity at a time when it wasn't popular to do, but he did it anyway. So even though he doesn't go around saying, hey, well, he's the expert, he was my expert, uh, because of the work we did together, and want positive feedback from members who participated, the value of having superintendents as their DEI leaders. So it wasn't about complaining one against the other, it was Mr. Coleman's message was about the need to work together in order to have sustainable and impactful change at the local level. And we will share with you, and we presented the feedback from participants, which was really amazing, as to what they got out of the day, and the thing that they're going back to districts together, uh, to work on. So I wanted to share that with you. Uh, finally, before we move into the agency updates with you, I continue to, uh, be privileged to share the information that we were doing here in the state. Uh, there was a webinar presented by the Hunt Institute, it's called Across the Ave, parent involved priorities one year from the ESO deadline, and was invited to talk about the work we're doing here in Connecticut, uh, the research collaborative, and also the parent engagement and stakeholder engagement that we employ for all the work that we're doing here in the state. And also, the Committee for Education funded, had their legislative contracts on the outlook for education as we hope we believe dollars are going away, and invited me, invited Connecticut to talk about how we deploy our resources, uh, in the state. So, ancient possibilities exist, uh, and we continue to do that work. So, transitioning now into our agency updates, I would like to invite Ajit Kapala Krishnan to the table. Uh, we would like to share with you how we're delivering on not only the VOY's current plan, but the VOY's future plan, and we're going to go to that, yes, but we're taking this seriously. Every student prepared for life, learning, and work beyond school, and wanted to share with you the, you can go to the next slide, we're going to talk about dual credit, uh, but we also had an opportunity for a press event, uh, on the next slide, you'll see the pictures, the Governor, uh, was there with us, I think we're superintendents in the room today, to take a look at our dual credit, uh, expansion grant, uh, that we deployed across the state, three-point-eight million dollars, uh, and to really take a look at how we're supporting our high school students with, uh, the partnerships with private universities and businesses in making sure that they can earn, earn college credit, uh, prior to graduation. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to Ajit.
Great, uh, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Board Chair Royce Walton, and Vice Chair Benham, thanks for this opportunity. As you can see, I'm not alone, I've got a powerful team here of district leaders, why I want to introduce them in just a moment. Uh, when we say dual credit, what do we need? And, uh, Mr. Taylor, you asked about AP as an example, so when we say dual credit, we're actually talking about courses that students take in high school, for which they get high school credit and college credit. An AP exam is one way, uh, to make that, to take that set, and AP is a promise of a college credit, or an IB, International Bachelor Program, they promise that you will get college credit, but college has to award that credit. In cases of dual credit programs, the student actually takes a course that's been jointly articulated between the high school and the college, and when the student finishes that course at the high school, mostly, they actually can register with the college, pay a fraction of the cost of what it would cost to take it at the college, and actually get college credit on a college transcript. So that's what we're talking about when we say dual credit. It's not new to Connecticut, it's been going on for a while, um, and what we're doing is really putting some resources into the mix to try to jumpstart that and grow that. And I, I imagine our students on, on, on the panel here are, are probably taking some of these types of courses, so, you know, feel free to jump in when, when that, on that moment presents itself. Um, the other thing about the dual credit programs is that they're not only meant to be academically focused in the sense that, they can be, they can be a biology course, a physics course, that's like the entry-level college biology or physics or psychology, whatever, that's fine, math course, et cetera. They can also be career-focused. So there are courses in blueprint reading, in manufacturing, in EMT cert training, and so on, wide array of possibilities that sort of help position our students into career pathways in those particular areas. So it's, it's kind of like, dual credit allows you to sort of do a lot of different, uh, different things. I think that's, that's kind of important to mention. So our grant program is supporting, uh, districts with startup costs, to articulate curriculum between high school and college, pay for teachers' stipends. Another big bear in this world is teachers needing the credential to be approved by a college, because when a teacher teaches this course, they're actually adjunct faculty at the college. So, so we pay for that. Particular thanks to our IAP partners and Dr. Curia this year from the CC, uh, CSCU side, representing both the four years and the CCP and federal as well. So we appreciate that partnership, a lot of partnerships with University of Connecticut, but also all the private, uh, Sacred Heart University, Abbot's Ford University, U of A, and et cetera, a lot of those partnerships, and you'll hear about some of those. Uh, lastly, I want to acknowledge Renee Savoy, who's sitting in the back here, uh, without Renee's work, uh, you know, a lot of these, the, the machines don't, don't run, and, and she's also a great thinker and, and mind sort of thought partner in many things. And also Danielle, uh, in, as part of the EdSite team, because we now get data from the colleges, we're able to actually know which of our students is taking what course in what college and what grade they're in, because that's what we're building into EdSite and in our accountability system. So we have three districts here, we're going to just briefly tell their story, and hopefully we can engage in a discussion. We have Superintendent Joe DiBacco and Assistant Superintendent Steve Bergen from Ansonia. Uh, we have Dave Pashon and Michelle Malloy from Coventry, and Superintendent Marian O'Donnell from Clenden. So I'm going to start with Ansonia, and let's hear their story.
First, I'd like to thank Chair Walton and Chair Benham, and, uh, I give a big thanks to Commissioner Russell Tucker for inviting her favorite superintendent to sit. She'll, she'll tell you later. I just want to let you know a little bit about Ansonia's journey. Presently, uh, we have eight partnerships with the system hierarchy. They range, as Ajit said, from, it could be our Connecticut Community Colleges to UBE to Post, all the way up to our UCOMs and Quinnipiac. And our programs that we have dual credit also match up with our pathway programs. So we have everything from advanced manufacturing, to allied health, to business, to future educator programs. to future educator programs. And those programs, as you know, are highly and well-attended by our students and they appreciate the success at a fraction of the cost. We've also partnered with local organizations to help budget those programs, like the Workforce, Socorse, Michael Ward. It's very important for many of our students to have the dual credit. They want to know where to leave that, where's the next step? Is it post-secondary, is it the job force? And in those helpful partners, those are the ones that help make things a reality in terms of shifts or other experiences for college transfers. I need to share, and I'll give Renee Savoy a lot of credit. She's the one who has helped support Ansonia's journey throughout these years. We've asked her many times, and what does this money pay for? Because Renee has been helpful. And as Ajit said, it comes to the certification that our teachers need, the training that they need, and also the supplies the teachers need for courses, which we were able to issue or expand our allied health pathway with the University of Bridgeport and provide an exercise science program. And you ask why exercise science, Steve and myself, we sit down with students on a monthly basis and ask where their interests lie. What are they interested in, what fields are they interested in? We also try to steer them to the job market, where jobs are as well. Because sometimes, you know, we all want to be a path designer or we all want to be a video game designer, but I don't know how many jobs are right there at this time to be a video game designer. Because I want to be a video game designer as well. So I'm going to take that job before my students get it. But we try to, we try to meet with them, see what their interests are, match them up. And our job is to partner and define Institute of Higher Learning that can offer the credits necessary for our students to get them at a fraction of the cost. And our students, I mean, we had two students present, they have over 50 college credits right now in changes. So about a year and a half of college are already out there. Last year, our senior class of 150 students accumulated over 900 college credits. This is something that is invaluable to a lot of communities, especially low students, low socioeconomic communities. If we, students can shape, one being two years off their college experience and college costs and parents are very appreciative. And that is our journey and that's what we do to gain our students' interest levels, but also to understand where we have to partner and where we need to go. And I'll pass to other superintendents. So, Chief Porter?
Yeah, just a quick question, are those credits transferable?
To most university guests, which I don't want to get into with Ajit, but AP courses. I'm not, my brother attended MIT and I'm not going to say MIT did not take all these AP classes, but what I'm, is the family here, if you got five on your AP exam. MIT expects you to get that five on your AP exam, so you're not, but these are much different. These are actual credits from a university. That's why a lot of our students really, I mean, you're not getting information and I'm, it's because these are valued, these add tremendous value when you transfer or you bring them to another school. It's a great question, yes. Good morning. Coventry is a small district in the northeast corner of Connecticut. Our high school obviously is small as well. So they're providing opportunities for our students and so much to families. And so the board works very hard to make those opportunities available and to keep these courses running for the last several years at Community College. The board also designated a certain fund each year of approximately $12,000 a year to offset the expense associated with that. As you pointed out, it's a fraction of the amount of cost to take a college course. However, we want to make sure to open up these opportunities for also not just those who have the ability to pay. So that is something I think that makes our program unique, that we continue to look toward that. These funds will go a long way in providing fresh development, developing the curriculum associated with the coursework, offsetting some of the expenses that teachers incur or get the credentials needed in order to teach these courses. And we're just so excited about that. And much like what's been already described today, is that these students are leaving our building and they're going into their college programs with a year's worth of credit. That's a big deal. I can't tell you how happy I am to hear from them or hear from their parents. I can't think how much money we save, you know, and how great that is for them to be able to have that. Because again, it means it opens up more doors for them to pursue things they may have not thought were possible before. I asked Michelle Malley to describe some of the work that we want to do is to go forward and some of the courses that we want to offer as well.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with me today. The dual enrollment grant is a tremendous benefit for our students across the state to expand our current programming. We currently have a strong dual enrollment program, but we're so excited about the possibility going forward. We offer 16 dual enrollment courses and Dr. Patrone shared with you the university. It's been fabulous to have partnered with higher education and to be able to look into our students' futures and make great things happen for them. We, our courses appeal to a variety of student interests. But we're really proud that recently we've been able to establish, we have strong partnerships with UConn and through the University of Bridgeport, we also were able to align our high school English course so that every high school senior in Coventry will earn, can earn college credit for their English college, their high school English class 12, which is a tremendous opportunity. So to speak to the, we have 25% students in poverty in our district. Some students, it's daunting to think about the cost of college for their families. And when students see how many credits they can accrue, they get very excited about that. And I think, you know, the research on students when they attend college, when they have some credits going in, they're likely to persevere and stick with it. We're proud to have a manufacturing partnership with Goodwin, that's true certification. And with this grant, one of the things we're really looking at is for the students that currently are not availing themselves the opportunity to earn college credit in our high school. So recently of our 206th, 11th, and 12th graders, 109 of them pursue that opportunity. Just 2.9%, we're really proud of that. And we now dug deep with it, held to the EdSite and to grant offers to dug deeper into our data and for those students. And we're looking to align some courses like psychology, for instance, that could be a built gateway course for some students that maybe haven't felt secure enough to reach up. And we're really, really speaking up our recruitment process with these courses. So, thank you.
Lastly, please, but not least.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for having us here this morning with the feedback. In Clinton, our story is similar, we're all similar sized districts, I think. And our demographics are somewhat similar to all of the unique. So Clinton is a small shoreline town and trying to expand opportunities for our students to explore, to challenge themselves a little bit within the confines of high school and to experience rare resources that are college credit bearing and maybe open their minds and learn some of their beliefs in themselves that they can access, set post-secondary pathways. We've also done a lot of exploration around work and how we take advantage of resources here in Connecticut for our students and our families to understand options and alternatives to that traditional pathway they have. And our dual enrollment courses have helped us to do that. So in the last three years, we expanded beyond our UConn connection and have connected with Quinnipiac for video production course, with Goodwin University, their eCamp program, and really taught and built up our advanced manufacturing program. We'll share a little more about that in a second. And then thirdly, with the middlesex community college, youth child development. And as I mentioned, I think we've had strong core class dual enrollment through AP, not dual enrollment, but AP opportunities for credit bearing and then for UConn ECE program. But what we're really exploring is how kids can also have an opportunity to expand their career interests and still gain those opportunities, build the confidence, save some money, and maybe explore a career path before they even take that step and commit to that post-secondary university. In Clinton, we have a hundred and eighty needs to circumstand and grants help support this program. Our dual enrollment in advanced manufacturing started with our local businesses. Our Economic Development Council in Clinton started to work with local manufacturers. And we had several international and local presence manufacturers in town who nobody knew about, we didn't even know about. And so a partnership that formed and that conversation led to how we could build a program that would open eyes, open minds to these kids' experiences. Through not just the dual credit expansion grant, but also through Perkins supplemental grants that we've received in the last three years, we've obtained over $180,000 in funding that has allowed us to elevate our technology engineering class, the state of the art, align with Goodwin University in their pathway. And then also provide field trips, internship, and take summer work in our local community. One of the challenges, I think, also around this, that we continue to think about is overcoming the minds and the thoughts of parents and educating them as well as their counselors. And that was an area we didn't expect, but they are the connection to kids' choices in their future. And that could be to send them down a path away from post-secondary because of first-generation low-income experiences. Or it could be opening the doors to what could be possible for a student in different pathways. So we've been able to use these dual credit courses, engage our kids, and I think start to open minds about how you can obtain college education in a different way and it's doable for many of our families and children. And we've seen that kind of excitement as our enrollment has increased and we're continuing to try to expand opportunities. So we really appreciate the support and investment of the State Department of that, the governor. And there's a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of opportunity here in Connecticut and in our local communities, and that's what we're trying to tap into in Clinton.
So, I just wanted to add before, so thank you all so much, DMS, it was really inspirational. Many superintendents in the room that attended who were not speaking, they were there in support of the 89 schools that we see this funded. And also to let the board know, this is what's happening and this is what's possible. So when we think about infinite possibilities, there are others that we could have gone into the table, didn't have time to do that. But why did you even know and hear directly what is truly happening in our districts? These partnerships and what the opportunities that they offer to students, so you know that. The data is certainly helpful that we can do that. We know just for funding that this is a combination, to talk about being creative, the 8.3 million, total 4 million dollars is a combination of our ESSA relief funding with the American Records Plan funding we see through the legislature. So it is a combination, this is how we utilize these resources. And then someone is then looking to see the results so that we can always have conversations about sustainability. And those are the combinations of things that we're doing. So just wanted to thank you for demonstrating what is possible and what is indeed occurring in our districts and opportunities, the infinite possibilities that we are really working towards for all those students.
I have a question on, yes, I have a follow-up question. In particular, you all spoke about the communication to parents. And in Clinton, I know you were surprised that you had to really like reengage your parenting concept. How early do you reach out to parents? Is it in high school or is it earlier?
I believe that, you know, in Clinton, it's ongoing work. So we're trying to connect the experiences in seventh, eighth grade in particular at the middle school into the high school and develop a pathway beyond those ninth or 12th. And start partnering with our parent-teacher association in Clinton, who is very active, to hold events to help explore careers, to come see the programs at the high school. And we have changed some minds in the PDA group itself as well to see those possibilities. But now we have concrete stories and experiences to share. And I think there's kind of an interest and an excitement. So I think you have to start early in not just a clear direction, but starting to help people understand the possibilities. And again, you know, in Clinton, we have a large, 50% of our families are first generation. And we have many that are first generation low income. And so really understanding and navigating the post-secondary process or how to help their students get there, have to start early because we have these opportunities in districts. So that's part of the work that we're doing right now.
Yes, certainly there's a lot of shift. I can remember in my history, you know, back in 10 years ago, it was still a shift there of understanding AP versus dual credit and so forth. I love the idea that you are looking at the students who have not participated in Coventry. I thought that's fantastic because this, this kind of funding will expose those kids that have not come forward and maybe look into the reasons as to why. You know, sometimes, I know, I think that, you know, Connie and Gazeem, I'm sure a lot of your courses, you see the same faces in those courses throughout your whole time. And there are others that are just as capable, and so it's nice to see that. The other question I had was, I can remember being in the classroom and hearing about the barriers of teachers applying to become certified, they don't get certified, but whatever it is that they can teach these courses. Is that still a barrier in some areas? That, I remember UConn being one that many of our teachers were, but then our smaller colleges, it was very difficult to get that approval for teachers. Is that still the case?
It absolutely is. But I have to commend the IHT partners because I think the message today is different from what it was years ago. I think the IHTs understand that, especially in the concurrent enrollment space, that high school faculty who have taught that content for a decade or more may not have a master's degree, say, in biology or mathematics. Because many of our teachers have a master's in education, not in, they have their bachelor's in the content. So they are coming up with creative ways in which teachers can actually get, it's not certified, but maybe they're approved by the, by the IRET to become adjunct faculty at that. And you can actually use these grant funds to pay for that teacher to take those courses, pay for those course fees. Sometimes it's one or two courses that they are suggested by the college faculty that they should take these courses to be ready to teach. And so, yeah, it is still a barrier, but I would say that the IHTs are definitely stepping up to the plate to think of creative ways.
And I think in that, a lot of the superintendents that are here, I think that has very much to do with it. We have the support and the superintendent pushing this program makes a big difference with parents when you hear it from the person. So, thank you.
Thank you. And your question, yes. Um, sorry, just wanted to, okay, I just wanted to emphasize the flexibility of ECE because that's a big problem with AP is that it all depends on one test, two hours, all your work for the year is to go down the drain if you do bad on that test. But I do think it's important that we emphasize that students have the option to take the AP test, even if they took an ECE course without taking the AP course. Because I think a big concern with students is that a lot of scholarship applications and a lot of college applications are asking for these AP courses. And so students are scared to transition to ECE. So I think just making that opportunity very clear to students is important. I personally did it where I sent ECE site with Southern, but took the AP exam and have been able to submit that course. So I think we should just really make that opportunity very clear.
Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of the outside world is involved in too, so.
Yeah, I would just second everything that Jasmine had to say. I would really emphasize the counselor piece as well because I have purely heard from students that a counselor potentially might be holding them back. And so trying to think about what the reasons for that might be and really trying to, as you said, get students to have them in these courses before giving them that opportunity to see what happens.
I apologize, this is very wrong mention, I just didn't catch it. But, and the sort of the accessibility or access to these sorts of courses is not necessarily equally distributed throughout the state. And I was wondering if you could just say a bit about either how this is helping to make that more equitable or just comments about how, what we may need to do. I don't think we even have like dual enrollment or dual credit policy that helps to sort of equalize that. My concern is for districts like the Allianceville District, having less opportunity and less availability.
I'm just saying that variability in offerings exists on all fronts, right? If you just look at AP offerings, you see those variabilities across the state. I think those variabilities do exist with dual credit as well. But I think these are, the funds actually, you know, obviously encourage expansion, but also expect a reduction in disparity among student groups within that district as well. So not only do we want them to expand, but also reduce student disparity. Because if I were to put up a chart that showed you percent from low-income families and those not from low-income families, you would see very similar disparities to what you see with achievement within some of these course participation. So. So, yes, we need to invest in it. I'm glad that districts have some resources. But I would say, and you said this repeatedly, that we need real dedicated appropriation at the state level that supports the cost of doing this business, because there is a cost to doing this work. And universities have absorbed some of that cost, high schools have absorbed, and districts have absorbed some of that cost. But if we are serious about this as a state, we definitely need dedicated appropriation. We may need legislation, but we may not. But at a minimum, we need funding to support this so that it's not just the students from low-income families. Those who are not tagged as being pre-reduced price, re-legislate, they may not necessarily be able to spare, even with the reasonable cost, three kids taking eight courses. Now all of a sudden, your eight times one-hundred-fifty, two-hundred is like fifteen hundred dollar fee. Like, that might not be possible for many families. So I think we really need to level the access playing field. It supplies needs required attention, is what you're hearing here. And, I mean, Clinton more than doubled their percentage in just one year, even before we invested, because they were beginning some of these partnerships. Now they're going to grow even more. I mean, so these districts here, you know, they're basically examples of what is possible, so.
But you mean that, I'm sorry, DMS districts that are receiving this grant money, they all had existing dual-credit programs, or is this money?
Most of them are. Almost every school in the state has some dual-credit partner. When UConn's ECE program is almost in every school district in the state. The Perkins Fund, the College Career Pathway Program Group, Perkins, works with ECE State primarily and provides for some of these. But districts on their own have been investing in this. So I think it's partly the mindset that if you want college credits to AP, but now they're not, actually, there are different approaches. And to her point, like, you know, you've been studying for this course, but also.
No, I was going to talk about it, because we're all working as a state to increase participation. The press release that we put out, we take a look at it, there's a chart there that shows the disparity. So we're not hiding it. We're making sure for transparency that we need to be doing some different things to encourage participation. And as you hear, it's at the school level, it's also working with families, it's working with our higher institutions, and at the press conference, we're engaging students as well. I mean, really, their voices matter, and we should be looking to do that. But it's very much the work that we're doing, it's very much a part of the new state board plan. And so down the road, we'll certainly set some targets and working very strategically and intentionally in this space.
So I raised this because I think there needs to be more support for doing more of this work and making it equitable across the state. And to say that nearly all, if not all, districts have, you know, a UConn ECE program might sound like it's sort of overstated a bit, because it could be that there is one teacher that has one course, and then there could be another school where they have, you know, five, ten teachers, right, with some sort of course. So that equally has to be a part of the conversation to continue to move the work forward.
Thank you all for joining us. Thank you. I think you're here about that. That's in, you know, Sonya's public opinion, Clinton, and I'll let you all battle it out to face the president in the hall.
All right, I know Aggie has more data for us. So moving on to our agency update, we last month, because of the national meeting, did not go through the release of our ten missing assessment results. So Aggie is going to just do.
A quick, yeah, no, I'm sure about the request. This year, when we released our assessment data, we released both attendance and assessment together. That was intentional. We started off by showing that our private absenteeism numbers are a little bit lower this past year, or twenty-two, twenty-three. They were down close to four percent. So that's actually, you know, that's actually good overall. But as you can see from the chart, still well above pre-pandemic levels. So eighteen, nineteen, you were at ten percent of student privacy absence. And in those days, we thought that was too high. Last year, you were at twenty percent. So still twice the pre-pandemic rate, but at least hopefully heading in the right direction. We have several Alliance districts, and here we're highlighting LEED district. LEED is our home visiting program, and we have rigorous evidence to show that that intervention actually works. It dramatically reduces, improves attendance and reduces absenteeism. There were several LEED districts that actually had rates in twenty-two, twenty-three that were lower than the two prior years. Still not pre-pandemic, but definitely some solid improvement. So that was good to hear. When we look at achievement, we look at our performance index, which is like an average measure. And I'm just going to quickly mention that, we don't have necessarily read every point in this chart, that we saw some slight improvements in our mathematics and science assessments, we're still in mathematics and science, but sort of slight decline in ELA. But in all areas, the reality is we are, for most students, really all student groups, we are below pre-pandemic levels. Our achievement has not yet caught up to pre-pandemic levels. We're not alone in the country. This is nationally what we're seeing as well. And you can skip this one. The one thing we know is that academic growth is a leading indicator of achievement. And this past year, our pace of growth, which is really pace of learning, actually was not as good as the prior years. So our pace kind of slowed a little bit. So, you know, but we also know that there are several high-growth schools and districts across the state that consistently achieve twenty percent or twenty greater growth outcomes than the state average. So we know from those schools in terms of what works. And all the work that we're doing here is sort of focused on those items, you know, targeted and focused curriculum work, data decision-making, not big data, but like little data, professional learning that actually incorporates all our parent educators, because oftentimes they are the ones supporting students' intervention, and so on. I mean, district-wide coherence and culture of finding, I mean, all the work that we're doing is geared around those. And so I think I basically summarized this. There are, again, some improvements in mathematics and science. More districts are exceeding, or exceeding their pre-pandemic levels. So that's good, but obviously, we're not, we're far from where we, where we need to be. So. And we created, you know, EdSite has tons of reports on this. There's, we updated our pandemic recovery dashboard to show where districts are and where schools are. We actually did a EdSite secure session where you get student-level data at the Alliance District Symposium last week. And after that, we have several one-on-one consultations in districts. So this afternoon, actually, at one o'clock, we're heading to a district to have that conversation with their leaders about some of the data.
Any questions?
For how much more time do the LEED district have, LEED funding?
I think it's, I'm trying to answer, twenty-two, twenty-six?
LEED is.
Please, yes.
And what you should know, and tell me about that question from our chair, is that for districts that are not LEED-funded, that they are participating in the LEED one-on-one trainings that's happening, so that they're deploying locally. And so there are those that are funded, but those who are learning what that looks like and what, how they can do that as well, are teams of training, lots of states. So this has become really a leading initiative, a statewide leading initiative, picked up, PBS NewsHour picked this up. And I think we're getting a lot of questions from national press, because this is the, I think, the pandemic-related, you know, interventions that is actually working, that even though districts may not be funded specifically, they see this as an auto-enthron debt, and that they're learning what it is that they need to do for this home visiting program.
Right, then you certainly, let's just know, where are the deals to be settled? So continue call for support and investment in our district, as we're not where we need to be.
Right. And so a quick update on the kindergarten entry-age legislation and where we are.
So as a state, another reminder, in twenty-twenty-three, the county legislature has changed how old a child must be to start kindergarten. So with that, we're remembering that the commissioner with our partners has done, and listed here in kindergarten and politics aside, is that there was the joint plan that the commissioner to provide some guidance, initial guidance, and also that's what we're doing in this department and with our partners, that was the joint plan. And then we provided the new entry-age for kindergarten MAAQ, which was developed again with a partnership with other stakeholders. We released that on November third. The discussionary knowledge around family and community engagement, also in August, and that was a great convening of guidelines and provided us with important feedback, things that we should consider. We're taking all of that in, we continue with our next step, and the commissioner's commitment to seeking extensive feedback. We will be having a focus group with CAPS, Executive Board, and other regional superintendent groups, to again gather more feedback and input. We are working internally, as well as disciplinary team, to review additional feedback and give the director roles, like how else or what else should be considered. And we are indeed moving to the early childhood, very early, to outline all that and communication. So there are quite a few more to come on the topic.
Thank you for raising the gun. And keep us posted. As you guys are aware, it's a big deal, both the school side and the parents.
Absolutely. We're hearing that. We met, they have the superintendent yesterday. And Friday morning, we're meeting with CAPS Executive Board to hear more from the superintendent and taking all that in to then help us figure out, what do we do for the guidance that we're going to put out in the field.
And hopefully, it's additional programming, it means it, right? Whatever happens, kids are cut off.
And we're working very closely in the office of the board's cabinet. This is work that we have to do in collaboration.
Quite an impact of the, you know, getting into a preschool program. And that's going to be, that's really what is going to be vital, because you're not talking another entire year for some of these kids.
Right. And if you start behind, we know how important early childhood is.
Right.
Yeah. Please keep us posted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a few more updates, and I'll pass that back. The governor just ran a Connecticut Kids Cabinet, and the Department of Education is one of the ten state agencies that will be a part of the cabinet, working together collaboratively to address all things around students, children, and each and all in Connecticut, being led by Commissioner Vanessa Dorantes from DCS. So we had a roundtable meeting on deploying that, and we spoke at that meeting about the work we're doing on behavioral health and the cross-sectionality of all of this happening across agencies. We also had a celebration, our FASSA challenge, Aggie and the teamwork on that as well, and celebrated the increases that we're seeing during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, fifty-seven high schools across thirty-five districts participated in our challenge. The challenge reached over eleven thousand high school seniors, and we know how important this is for addressing barriers to entry, to post-secondary education for students. And so the challenge will continue with some, I think it is SO funding that we have that is supporting that moving forward as well. We continue to share with you, and I know you've all watched the Intrig or Voice to Change program, that was initiated a year ago. This is the year of implementation. And the deputy commissioner was able to join Charlie Kenyon, who is now our lead for this project for Voice to Change, and went to Derby. It was the same day we had the FASSA celebration. So I was at one, and deputy commissioner was at the other event in Derby. But it's amazing to watch what happened. So as for those listening, Voice to Change is first in the nation statewide participatory budgeting initiative, where students got a chance to tell us how they want these funds to be deployed. There were sixty-nine winning proposals across the state, and so this is now implementation. So Derby High School has a project that tries to check the box for learning acceleration, check the box for social-emotional support, and check the box for community engagement by building this pavilion, which is this outdoor space. My understanding is that those benches were built by students. And so they opened the pavilion, and you may not be able to see that, but there's now enshrined in a main plate that is in the pavilion with the student's name and voice for change. And so that's just one of the initiatives, Voice for Life, from, you know, here from, about from when it started, and here we are with implementation. And there's more of those occurring across the state, and we'll continue to share that, share that with you. Deputy Commissioner, I have a quick word. You experienced it and it came back energized.
Yeah, it's not always that you have an opportunity to see something implemented from the inception to, you know, where we work. And to truly see, you know, you tell students, you didn't do anything, bring your thoughts and ideas forward, and we will support that. But to hear the students speak about it, from where it started, to get an idea in her head, and then how she was able to rally other students within her community to bring about this change, was amazing, and how it's going to impact students here. So and how it's going to impact those who are staying behind in the school, and that's just the school community, for the community as a whole, because that is an area that can be utilized by anyone on the weekend. If you just need a space to be able to think, clear your head, or even just have a space to be outdoors. We know the importance of being outdoor. I believe COVID really brought that out into the forefront of just mental health, the impact that it's having on our students and our community. And it was just an exciting place to be, the FASSA event, being very interesting as well. But I'm glad that I was there because I was connected to students and to the voice since that was the game to play. It was great.
Thank you very much. Let's see, if you can, here's a picture of the DEI Symposium, so you can take a look at that as well. But we also have four Connecticut schools named with twenty-two, twenty-three national blue ribbon. Last time, we bought it, so we're looking to do that as well. We considered our work on infinite possibilities, but we made it great. We had a press release out. We can see that the diversity of schools, a magnet school, elementary school, and a charter school, that was also recognized as a national blue ribbon school. We also launched the Red, White, and Blue School Program with the Secretary of the State. You can see Steve Armstrong in that picture as well. First launched in twenty-sixteen, this program, the Secretary of the State, was launched with previous Secretary of the State and also previous Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Wenzel, to increase the image of teaching of civics and government and emphasize influence of active and informed citizenship. You heard a little bit about that this morning. But this program is now up, and we'll certainly bring more information about that to you as well. The final gesture is our over ninety district leaders gathered for their Alliance District Symposium, and thanks to those who participated, talked across the agency who presented that. So that is my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you to the team. Well presented. There is much going on, and it's always good for us to hear it, hear that. We will now move to our seven A, which is going to be a second of the investigation report in the matter of the notification action. I will remind the board that at our last meeting, we voted to have the report written and presented to us. The report is now coming to us this month. At the conclusion of the report, we'd like to do a roll call of the.
Good morning. I'm sitting here with two individuals who have diligently worked on this matter for the past couple of years. So I am going to play the proverbial pot and plant, and enjoy them. If you will go through them for a moment, I just first want to follow up on what Commissioner said earlier, and just express my personal thanks to Gaff against a, who has been, without saying I provided live counsel in my time doing the department, and her departure is both personal and professional loss. So, thank you.
Good morning. We had before you the investigation report for Mr. Charles Schwab. I will refer to him as the certificate holder from this point forward. Mr. Schwab has chosen not to participate in the process that we have, or that the regulations offer him. So he did not come and speak with us about his convictions and the incidents that occurred, upon which we'll. um upon which we're reporting. Um, in many, he also chose not to hold have a hearing. Um, and so we are now before you bringing the report to the board um regarding the activities um of the certificate holder um that we believe lead to uh our recommendation for revocation of his certificate. Um, Mr. or the certificate holder, um, in 2021, April 30 of 2021, um, exposed himself to three 19-year-old females in a parking lot in South Valley. Um, we communicated with the school district, we communicated with police officers that participated in the call from the the young women. And um, the gentleman was ahead of time through court, uh, has done what the court perceived to be the appropriate outcome for his uh conviction. And um, we now are looking at the whole concept of whether or not he should continue to hold the certificate.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, we're good that you have the full report um in front of you. Are there any questions?
Can I clarify please who the committee are in court?
That's accelerated case rotation. We don't think it was a conviction.
Yeah, the case where uh charges were brought, there was a resolution in the in the court system. Uh, the due process has been offered to the certificate holder. The certificate holder has chosen not to participate in it. Um, we are at the point now of the recommendation for department based department, the facts that have been presented. Any questions? All right, so in front of us, we have uh the resolution resolved that pursuant to its authority under section 10 dash 145 VI of the Connecticut State statute in section 10 dash 145D dash 612 of the regulation for Connecticut state agencies based upon the evidence included in the written report of the commissioner entitled in the matter of D S certification action. The State Department of Education formulated such this report determined by a roll call vote that the educator certificate held by Charles Schwab should be, shall be revoked, certified that each member has read the written report of the commissioner. They use this determination upon this conclusion that the evidence supports the finding of misconduct sufficient to revoke the certificate and adopt the evidence and conclusions outlined in the written report of the commissioner and direct the commissioner to take the necessary action. So I read that just so that you are clear what you are, what you are attempting to do and voting on in this. That you're aware of the fact that you've read the report and are and concurs with the action. All right, are we prepared for the roll call? All right, please call the roll.
Chair Erin Benham.
I acknowledge I read the report and I vote in favor.
Bonnie Burr.
I acknowledge I read the report and I vote in favor.
Eric Clemm.
I acknowledge I read the report and vote in favor.
Erin Dubois-Walton.
I read the report, vote in favor.
Edward X. Wade Jr.
I acknowledge I read the report and vote in favor.
Donald Harris Jr.
I have read the report and I vote in favor.
Marsha Paluch-Crowe.
I have read the report and I vote in favor.
Malia Sees.
I have read the report and vote in favor.
Alan Taylor.
I have read the report and I vote in favor.
Thank you all. That uh motion passes yet quickly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attendance. Uh, that will bring us to item 8A, financial matters, basically your 2024, 2025 budget reduction option.
Good morning, Chair Dubois-Walton, Vice Chair Ben, Commissioner and Board members. Um, it is my privilege to uh do my, I guess, perform my last speech. This is one on the board. Um, for the far ado, I just want to thank the commissioner and all of my colleagues and, you know, for an amazing time here, um, of which the last 10 years have been spent in this role. And frankly, when we hit the pandemic, if we didn't all have each other, um, you know, we wouldn't have made it through and all of the good work that's been done um to support our students and the programs that you hear about from my colleagues. You know, I genuinely have been blessed to work with some amazing people and an amazing board. So, thank you. This is the um midterm budget adjustment. Not the, last month we did the technical adjustments. Each year we are required to submit uh budget reduction options. The guidance that is provided by the Office of Policy and Management is that those should be achievable and reasonable. Um, in light of, you know, the ongoing recovery from the pandemic for our students, you know, I didn't feel that the department should be recommending reductions for major education formulas if I think those supports are continuing to be needed. Um, so what we are offering is a couple of small grant programs that we are essentially funds passed through us. Uh, those are the Rigid Success and Connecticut Writing Project. They also have funding available to them through our ARPA grant, adult grant funds. And there are other opportunities to provide resources to continue that programming. So we're recommending that that be the direction. Um, the other reduction we are offering is one of our charter schools um actually came in and asked us to reduce their state count. And so based on that reduction in state count, um, they they had sufficiently money for everybody. I will still say that, um, this will not create a difficult situation in the account. But we are offering a reduction option, um, between that this particular school said that they were going to be on the whole itself. So the total is $329,250. And um, I had just need your phone number.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you Kathy for this and certainly again for everything that you have have done for us. Um, are there any questions on this matter? See, none of us favor. Uh, any opposed? Vote your favorite.
Any others? Let's not raise this for personal service, I tell you, as well as Kathy. Um, not in your direction, I'm sharing this where it was done. Kathy that greeted me and I remember and helped me very much when I was on legislation and policy. And I appreciate all the help that you gave me and to the committee and then thus continuing to lead that um committee for a couple of years. Uh, you will be missed.
Thank you.
We always knew you were going to be able to best my, to start in this room. No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, we have to backtrack. I was trying so hard to get this right. And um, I want to go back to item 7A. Moved it aside. Uh, I want to get a motion on item 7A. Second.
Second.
Okay. It should move in properly seconded. Do I have to call it again or? Did we lose Mike? Mike, do I have to call it again? It might be a bit like what I have to do. I think it's fine. No, we're good. Okay, we have on the record. It's been moved in. Thank you. Perfect. Okay. Um, all right, wonderful. That brings us uh to committee report.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Chair.
Academic Standards and Assessments Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, October 17.
Thank you, Olivia, good morning. Yes, it just passed around the table. Um, our calendar, it's been a while. We did, we did need um supplies, yes, supplies to plan on this calendar. Um, and I just wanted to know, and I reached out to some board members to see your availability. But we are not, we do have four um district visits coming up. And so at any time that you would like to participate in a visit, you can let Ivy know. We do have at least two board members, board members going to each visit. And these are the schools, if you're wondering why they're so passionate, these are the schools that the accountability committee met with in late spring. Um, we we heard wonderful programs coming in schools. Um, and this is our options of having them returned to the accountability for the company for the full board uh that we actually will go out and visit those schools like we have done in past years. So I wanted to give you, let you see this calendar so you know our movement in case you're available. Uh, and I thank the board members who are outside of the committee that volunteer to participate as well. So that is uh the report from accountability.
Thank you. Question? Finance audit and budget?
Okay. Okay. You hear me? First of all, I want to say uh from my position as the chair of this committee, thank you Kathy. Although you didn't have a lot of input into our committee uh meetings per se, but whenever I had questions, you were always the one I could depend on to help me navigate through all of this. And yes, you will be missed. Uh, the um Finance Audit and Budget Committee is Nora Chapman is finally fully retired. And uh, it's in the hands of interim um Director Gloria McCree. While we are still, the committee is still uh trying to interview and put somebody in there permanently. So I'll just leave it like that. And so we have not met uh this past month.
Thank you for your work on this. This is not an easy job to complete that last. So thank you for your work on that. Um, legislation policy document.
Bill. We're back this morning and I just talked about two uh two items. One was a follow-up from a previous meeting on fellow personal rights, which we'll do another follow-up conversation. And I don't remember where that comes to this body. And then we also had an update from what Harper on their regional imbalance. Um, I hesitate all the plans that don't actually need to develop a plan. Um, but they had a fight um that brought them back to imbalance where they were, or rather in imbalance for their, they studied decline. And it looks like it does push them back about six years, um, or at least two levels of six years ago. And they are hopeful that they are going to go back in the right direction. Uh, but certainly I'm eager to see what the numbers tell us this year when they come out. Next, um, that means in November, we're going to pick up at least these two options with these two items, which are our additional items, which is Fire Arts Safety Guidelines uh that we had hoped to get to today. Um, and then also to start a conversation about potential policies taken around the C P K P by them that have been brought before us. That's probably not much, not much, right? Yeah. And that's it?
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? All right, our D C A report.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Uh, our board is at on September 20th and our subcommittee will convene on the 10th October, the full board will meet then on October 18th. Over the summer, there were hundreds of new hires. Uh, some vacancies remain in heart-stilled areas of specific trades, for example, but we're far better off than we were last year at this time. You may have seen on TV that W S S D, um, Great Bay, Connecticut, featured our culinary arts program that could have been packed, which is a real cool. And the um, you know, the kids there deserve praise for all the hard work they do. Needing any technical education career uh system, student workforce, the application is now open. So if you're interested in hiring our students for any um projects, and this is our website. Uh, C C A S offers a variety of services to the student public, had a fraction of the class, also providing our students with the hands on experience they need. So um, check out the website if you're interested in any of that.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, our N A C report.
Hey, uh, well, this is my last report on that basis. My term as Vice Strategic Director and last report member will come to an end with the annual meeting later this month. I'm delighted that I'll be succeeded by Vice Chair. And that shows you a very solid representative of Connecticut. So it's good that Connecticut is ready to be represented in N A C. And also my term as Vice Chair of the Government Affairs Committee will come to an end this month also. And so uh next year, it would be, uh, you know, every state should have one member on this board on the Government Affairs Committee. And so this is a great opportunity to invite the board to get involved because the three ways to learn about what's going on in Washington and also learn about what's happening in other states. So that's the end of my N A C for now.
Because thank you for your service to N A C and keeping us connected. Um, and uh, and they have had an opportunity to go and interact with us. They think very highly of you and with your contribution. So thank you for the services you've provided. Um, and our third report.
Um, your sir reported in close. I'm pretty sure you agree that it's really close. I just wanted to comment on the last report um about hiring the tech school. My husband and I did that a few years ago. And it is quite the experience. I was, you're looking for, I guess it was a tea journey because when they would come to the house, you know, my husband said, you have to, you know, you have, you probably should leave. Um, but it was, they knew the words, put this up to a classroom, and you're not home. And it's fascinating to watch. It really is just a wonderful workmanship and it was, you know, very encouraging to hear. And we were encouraged to try to reach out because it's
Off Project, you know.
Yeah, and it was such a big program years ago and it sort of has sort of dwindled off, you know. And I've recently had some people ask me about my experience with it and it was fabulous. It really was. So I'm very excited to do the thing.
Even your cards, remember?
Yes.
Your card up there, uh, even send in my collection. Never here's a card.
I did.
Very good. Thank you all. Uh, thank you for those reports. Thank you for, um, look at that. We finished before you. Oh, yeah, the the tilly meeting too, two o'clock?
No, it's following, it was scheduled for last night.
Oh, so it's right. Okay. Well, I will not hold you many longer. Um, seeing no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Very good. We're assured.
And just one, I mean, I'm going to be and then just one time.